Good evening, we'll call this meeting to order. At this time, I don't believe we have a minister present, so we'll ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, if you would, please stand and pledge allegiance with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which withstands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Crouch.
Here.
Mrs. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Cogel.
Here.
Mr. Portland.
Here.
At this time, we get the privilege of giving back to a couple of our police officers that are retired for all the many years of service that they have given to us, so I'm going to come to the front here. Do you want to do them one at a time or together?
If you wanted to time it, I'll go together.
Okay. All right, first, we'll ask for Detective, Retiring Detective Timothy Russell to come forward. As the mayor, on behalf of City Council, the City Manager, and all City employees, we would like to extend our formal congratulations and warmest wishes to Detective Timothy Russell, retirement from the city after 23 years, effective April 21st, 2023. Congratulations. Thank you. We'll let you stand over there while we call Captain Glenn Chicorelli. You spent a lot of years for this day, huh? As the mayor, on behalf of the City Council, the City Manager, and all the City employees, we extend our formal congratulations and warmest wishes. Captain Glenn Chicorelli on his retirement from the city after 26 years of services will be effective June 1st, 2023. Go ahead, you can hold that too. Thank you. Thank you. And then we'll bring them up here together. Beverly, would you like to get a couple of pictures? Okay.
Mayor Crouch?
Yeah, they have some.
Yeah, if it's okay with the guys that have the...
All right, I'll go on this side, John. Absolutely. Sure. Just take a picture of me, too. You guys are good doing that. Uh-oh.
Captain.
How much does this cost me?
Sincerely, thank you for everything you did, teach, teach me throughout the years.
You want me to hold this thing, so you want him to open that up?
Yeah, yes, please. Holy moly!
Oh my gosh.
Oh, moly!
It'll go like that. You guys can stand up here with him. Get up here. Come on. All officers, including, including. Come on.
You gotta be up here, too.
Got to get the chief in here, too. I know.
Oh, Detective Anderson.
Come on, here you saw his phone. Anything else you want to say on the behalf of the Police Department? Hello, Chief, any words from the Chief?
Well, I did just thank the captain for all the years of what he has taught me throughout the years as being the Lieutenant of Titusville Police Department now, watching him and working underneath him as my supervisor. He, there's several things I have learned, and of course, it's life expenses also. So again, I do sincerely thank you for that.
Glad you keep your mouth shut like that.
And I'm being honest, yes. And Tim, whenever I needed any help in any way.
Thanks, Aaron.
Your patience, taking your time, all the guys, I'm sure I speak for all of them. You never rushed us, no matter how busy you were. If we need your help, you were right there, you dropped everything, you took your time, you had patience. Something we don't always all have, but you, you were the most patient of all of us, and you taught us as we went through and helped us, and I appreciate that, man, thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. At this time, and at this time, we're going to take a 15-minute recess. There's coffee, cream and sugar, cookies. And we'd like to give everybody a chance to congratulate these guys. Thank you again for both of you. So we'll take a 15-minute recess. Don't worry about it. Well, that was very nice, that's one of the more fun parts of the job here. So we'll move on with the meeting, we'll... All of the council people should have gotten their previous meeting minutes from April 17th. Would somebody like to make a motion to accept these as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the... Let's ask for them.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Portland?
Yes.
Mr. Cogel?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Operational report, so at this time, we'll do the manager's report.
Yes, good evening, Council. Some items this week on the manager's report, the first being cleanup day that was originally scheduled for this past Saturday due to the uncertainty of the weather. We decided at the last minute with take pride to move it to this Saturday, May 6th, at 9:00 AM, we'll be meeting at Shiny Park to clean up around the city. We're asking volunteers to still continue to come out. I believe that the Moose Club will be providing some refreshments and some food as well. Again, that's 9:00 AM, May 6th, we're meeting at Shiny Park, and it usually takes us till about lunchtime by ten o'clock, and hopefully the weather will be more cooperative this weekend. Next, I want to provide Council with an update on the ambulance. It's been a while since we've talked about that, Jay, I know it's probably news to you about the ambulance as well. So we are currently working out a cooperation agreement with Emergicare Ambulance. We recognize through the past several years, there's a lot of times where our fire department are on scene for sometimes up to an hour waiting for an ambulance. It's not that Emergicare is not responding, it's just they're either short on manpower or they're on another call somewhere out of the area, and they're unable to respond. So we've been relying on a lot of volunteer fire departments, Senator of Spartanburg, community ambulance at Franklin to come up and to transport somebody, obviously in the city, it's a couple of blocks to the hospital, again, as I said, waiting up to an hour. So last year, we delegate, we allocated ARPA money to potentially look at either providing an ambulance at a fire station to provide service of basic life support care in the city, or try to work out a cooperation agreement with Emergicare to where they would supply the city of Titusville with an ambulance from Emergicare that would be... Emergicare's, obviously Emergicare's ambulance, our duty crew, two-day crews would run that ambulance only when Emergicare was unavailable. They were doing it, as I said, in a facility of transport, out of town, what have you. So we're getting close to the end, I'd like to say, at an agreement with Emergicare to be able to house that ambulance that's with Emergicare at our fire department, used only when needed on a full-time basis. It would be operated basically by support our fire department staff or EMT certified, not paramedics. So the goal was to get folks to the hospitals quickly as we can, and not have to wait up to an hour. The benefit of that, not only for residents here in the city, but also to those volunteer ambulance services and also community that they're leaving their area to cover Titusville, which doesn't seem fair. Again, we appreciate them helping us, but again, you know, it's a domino effect when they happen to leave their jurisdiction. So just an update, I spoke with Dave Asbeck, the head of Emergicare, early today, and advised me, we're still working through, once an agreement gets to an attorney or gets to an insurance company, they have to look at all those things, and it takes a little bit longer than what we hope. Again, I'd like to say we're getting closer to an agreement to work that out. Next, I have two special event applications that I have approved. The first being National Trails Day, which is on June 3rd. Looks like it's from 9:00 AM to noon. This will be through, this is done through Titusville Trails Association, Titusville Renaissance. This will be... Just as this, this will be down at, looks like the Jersey Bridge Trailhead, down around the Admire Complex, Moon City Trail. As I said, it's on June 3rd for the National Trails Day. Again, we have all the required insurance, all the crackwork works, that's been approved. Next, I have the Titusville Go Devils Slugfest 2023, baseball tournament. They've been doing this for the last five years, this is going to be held down at the Admire Complex and also the Site-Town Field as well. This will be on June 2nd and June 3rd, a two-day event. Again, this is the Titusville Go Devils, we have all the appropriate insurance, big ones for that, so we'll be passing that on to our department heads and having things ready for that as well. Next, civil service testing schedule, just to let Council know, we are trying to get the list complete for our fire and our police side. Fire Department is scheduled for testing on May 13th, it's a Saturday. And the police are scheduled for the following Saturday, May 20th. I think right now, Heather, we have several potential police officers for that list. I think we have a few fire applications as well. So just want to provide a Council update on that. Next, dog committee meeting, we had our second dog committee meeting last week with the committee folks, Director Price of the committee. We talked a lot about a previous hearing that was held on one of the cases in Titusville in town here that I believe it was another dog got bit by an animal. And so we met and talked about that, we talked about the state law, that supersets obviously the city ordinance as well, some of the things that we can do, the city can do to try to alleviate some of the issues with that. One of the things we talked about was the old dog kennel that we have down in our public horse garage, and working with our new Deputy City Manager and our Commissioner as well, Public Safety Commissioner, to look at that kennel, potentially being not a place where you have stray dogs, but a place where the dog warden, when he has to take a dog out of a residence, it could go there and quarantine instead of leaving it at the home. Seems like one of the issues we had with this last issue, the last couple of issues, where the dog hasn't been able to be, wasn't taken out of the home, it was left there. A lot of that has to do with the dog going back to be, though, not being a place for the dog to go to. So we talked about potentially having a place here to where a dog could go and just quarantine for 14 days or 10 days, however many days it is. So at least we get the dog out of the home. Again, it's been frustrating for some as we, you know, as we look at the ordinance and what we have in the state law as well, and kind of limited in what we can do. One of the things we obviously continue to reiterate is that folks have an issue with an aggressive dog, they need to file with the Police Department to get charges going on the dog warden as well, so at least to get it through the system. So we're going to do it with the courts. Again, we're going to, I assume, meet again here next month?
We'll see, this month, we're meeting on...
I guess we're meeting this month.
On the Monday before our meeting.
Yes.
The next Monday.
Yep.
So we're meeting this...
Yeah, and hats off, thank you to the community members that are involved, public members that are involved in this committee, and sharing their ideas and thoughts as we try to work out a better solution or some ideas on how we can make a better. Next, I want to refer everybody to the community calendar, tap into Titusville PA. I think it's been a couple of meetings since I've done that, Sierra's done a great job of promoting that. But tap into titusvillepa.com for events that are going on now that the weather's changing, the spring's here, we have a lot of wonderful events going on in the city. That's what they're established, the ironworks, Construc in the park will be starting up before you know it, and obviously the two events that we have now going on that I recently approved with baseball tournaments and trails and different things, so tap into titusvillepa.com. And last, Council, I had an additional item I wanted to bring up to Council's attention in St. Parker request. As Council recalls, we allocated a little over $200,000 for our ambulance that we thought potentially we would be doing in-house. With the fact that we have a potential agreement in place with Emergicare that essentially frees up $200,000 that we will be using for that. With that change, as Council, where we have many projects on the Admire Complex this year, we recently got back a cost estimate of what it was going to cost to do some dugouts, to put in the pickleball courts, playground sets, other things as well, and the costs are very high. I think I shared that with Council.
Yes.
Jay, I made it off with you, but we allocated a little over $200,000 for some projects down at the complex this year. With the cost of coming back, we don't have nearly enough money, because it came in over $1 million just to do some of those projects. Obviously, it's nothing we can control, we can certainly cut some things back on dugouts, for example, we can kind of occupy those dugouts, maybe do away with some of the extra things that we thought we'd like to have, but again, we're still short on money. One of the items that we've talked about is the pickleball courts. As it stands right now, we're going to probably be good to go with two dugouts, the baseball field and the girls softball field, but there's not going to be any money left. The pickleball courts is something that we've had a lot, and we've talked about a lot in the last few years, pickleball has been an up-and-coming sport, I think it's been around for a while, and we have a lot of interest here in Titusville. In fact, we had painted some lines over at Urgis Park recently. I think three years ago, we actually painted the lines out of the complex on the old courts that lasted about a year before they faded away. So with the support we have in the city of folks asking, I wouldn't say weekly, but quite often, hey, how would those pickleball courts, we still going to be able to get those down at the complex. So my ask to Council tonight is if Council would consider getting the blessing of moving $25,000 out of ARPA that would have went for the ambulance that we now have to put towards a potential pickleball courts down at Admire Complex. The Redevelopment Authority, one of their foundations is going to donate $5,000, they've already given the approval for that. With our $25,000 and $5,000 from the Redevelopment Authority Foundation, we would have $30,000. I would like to apply through one of our local foundations and ask for the remaining balance to be able to put those pickleball courts down at the complex. Again, I think it's not just for the older folks, it's for the younger folks as well. I think we agree, ask that a great addition to the Admire Complex, as we have so many wonderful things going on down there, as I feel this would be a great thing to be able to do this year along with the dugouts. Obviously, you would take another project off our CBGT list if we continue to want to fund projects, there's CBGT down at the complex, this is one less project we'd have to worry about when we look at funding for CBGT next year. So again, I'm just asking for Council blessing to reallocate $25,000 of that $200 that we have for the ambulance to put for this potential project down at the Admire Complex. So I don't need a vote, I just need a blessing.
But that's the last... Okay, so...
Yes.
I think when you and I had an opportunity to go down there and talk to a couple of people, one person from the area, one person out of the area about it, it sounds like as we give money, they have other foundations that they'll be, that people want to contribute as well. I think it's, I see it as overall for the whole community, so... What's the rest of Council think?
I know they have, you know, they like to do plenty of events down there during the summer, bringing, you know, hundreds of people into town, so, you know, if the course aren't done, probably hate to lose that opportunity. Because I know we've been talking about it for a year and a half since I've been on Council, so...
I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Thank you.
And just curious, those two events that you approved, do they get put on the community calendar?
I don't know if they're on there, not going to check.
Do we have to look them on there?
You don't have to.
Well, no, but it'd be, one of the things that the people that did the Trail Day last year thought, there were so many people at the, at the Admire Complex, it'd be nice if they knew that that thing was going on, because so many people, whose kids didn't have, younger kids didn't have anything to do, could be enjoying a trail, and so... Okay. Any other questions, or would somebody like to make a motion to accept the manager's report?
I'll make a motion to accept the manager's report as presented.
I'll second that.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Cogel?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Portland?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. Also, tonight, we have minutes of boards and authorities, we have minutes from Benson from our library meeting from April 18th. Someone like to make a motion to accept these as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the four minutes from Benson Memorial.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Portland?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cogel?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. Also, we have a recommendation from our Civil Service Rules and Regulations from the Fire Department, if you'd like to just give us the bird's eye view of that?
Yes, Council, this is a recommendation, actually a request from our Public Safety Commissioner to change the Fire Department residency rule. As it stands right now, if you want to be in the Fire Department, you have to live within 10 minutes of the Fire Department. The change would be 10 minutes from the city limits. Believe it or not, we had an apple can previously that applied if you lived beyond the 10 minutes from the Fire Department, and I think, I think, I'm not speaking for the Public Safety Commissioner, but I would say we're missing some candidates that are potentially a little bit closer that we could certainly use as being part of the Fire Department, so... I don't know, does anyone have anything to add to that?
Just public service in general, you know, numbers are doing the link, I mean, it seems like daily, so... You know, if we can make an exception, if we can extend this boundary to even include one more person, you know, that would be very helpful, so... This goes back to the way that it previously was. It was changed, I don't even know, within the last couple of years. All the current firemen and minutemen were hired under the rules of the 10 minutes from the city limits, and at some point in time, that got changed to 10 minutes from the Fire Department. So all we're looking for is changing it back to the way it was.
Is that something we need to vote on?
Yes.
Okay. If someone has no discussion on it, would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Civil Service Commission to change for new hires to live 10 minutes from the city limits.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you, and call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Portland?
Yes.
Mr. Cogel?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. Council committee updates. I know I spoke with somebody from the planning commission. We still have to put somebody on the planning commission, and they're working very diligently to try to get the VRBO and Airbnb stuff done before World Festival. I don't know if we'll do it, or they're trying their best, so they should be meeting shortly. Anyone else?
Bill is the zoning hearing board.
Okay.
They have a meeting Wednesday, and skip Monday if somebody would be willing to.
What time on Wednesday?
5:45.
I can be there, unless somebody else wants to.
And it just, it'll be here, as regards to a concession stand over at the Site-Town Field.
Okay. All right. At this time, we'll open it up for public participation pertaining to agenda items. We have two different public participations. This one is for the agenda items, five-minute time limit. Tell us whether you're resident or non-resident, if you want to talk about the agenda tonight. We only have two items on our agenda, there'll be a presentation from DCED on our stamp program from Terry Kunkel, and also, we will, we're looking to approve Resolution 2 setting a fee for outdoor seating permit. All right, we'll proceed. First, we'll have a presentation from DCED on the stamp program fieldlight. Thank you, welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Terry with DCED. I presented here to Council four years ago almost about the Strategic Management Program Plan, and been visiting with Neil and stopping in and saying, hi, I'm Terry. I'm with the Department of Community Economic Development, Governor, Senator for Local Government, I'm your Northwest Local Government Policy Specialist, so it'll be a test on that when we're done.
Okay.
And, but anyway, I am your representative in the Northwest. And the stamp program...
Thank you.
An acronym, you know, in the state, we all love acronyms. And it is for the Strategic Management Program Plan. And it is a grant program that we have for our municipalities within the state. And what it, what it is, is, and this, this, I'm going to give you the rundown, you guys can look at all the pages later on, it's pretty much going to give you all the information. But what it is, is, it is a, it's in multiple phases. The first phase is a financial and management review, an operational review, and a consultant is hired, and that consultant comes in and reviews your past five years' financials, and then predicts, and then based on the operation review, department head review, everything, and then they give you a report that projects first your, for your next five years' financials. Where are we going to be in five years if we stay the same? And it also gives recommendations of how you can improve your finances. It's a third set of eyes coming in from outside. The best, the part about this grant that's beneficial to municipalities, and I have 26 active stamp participants in the Northwest. And it's, it's a five-year plan, so for the next five years, you can come in for subsequent phases. And they're each, each an additional round. And it's a sliding, we, it's a 50% match, but we can slide the scale based on the... And based on evaluation of the city, we can give you a 10% match. You would have a 10% local match. The first phase typically costs, for your size of, for your size of city here, the first phase could cost anywhere from $30,000 to $80,000. It's a six to eight month, it's a pretty intensive, you know, review of everything. Not every one of the recommendations will create, or will cost money. It could be something that you didn't even think about. City, City Me voted, see them. They're now in phase two and enter into phase three. But what it does then is, through those recommendations, sometimes it's technology. You know, our technology needs updated. The big one now is cybersecurity. You know, insurance companies all want you to have cybersecurity and want to study the policy, which your servers have to be updated. So that's another thing that a lot of people get, all their, all their technology, websites, I don't know how new your website is, or whether it needs some help, and the new one is Citizens Alert. I don't know if you're familiar with that, you know, they can recommend the app for Citizens Alert. And those subsequent phases are all of that 10% match also, too. Calms plans, when's the last time you've done a calm plan?
2014.
2014, typically, you know, about every 10 years, you do, you do a comprehensive plan, and they should be implementable, shouldn't be on a shelf. So that, so there's so many multiple phases of this, that I have some of my municipalities that are in phase eight, they just keep taking advantage, after one grant closes, they go on to the next one, and each one's up to $200,000. But so like, if you need a technology upgrade, where are you going to get it for a 10% match? You know, so it's been really beneficial to municipalities every time, and it's a great opportunity moving forward. And like I said, it's a five-year review and a five-year projection. So over those next five years, you can come in for as many phases of this grant that you, that you would like with your recommendations. And I work very closely with you throughout the process and make sure that you're getting a great report and a great, there's things to note there that I've had municipalities go, oh, we never thought of that, we need to change that. And it is really, and we funded positions at some point, you know, we're in position because we all know that we're all struggling, whether you're a municipality or you're, or you're an individual with the inflation rates and other things. But we, you know, based on what your recommendations are, based on what your projections are, we have funded positions because you work with, you know, less services. And I'm always interested in the fire and police, because that's one thing that when you talk about residency requirements and different things like that, because it's a struggle for everybody moving forward, that, you know, retention is tough in those fields. So, but with that being said, there's a few consultants in the state that actually do this project because it is pretty detailed, and they'll sit down with your police department, your fire department, help out EMS crisis. I have that everywhere in Northwest. Emergicare is a name that I know very well. So, so basically, all you do if you decide you want to go into the program is pass a resolution in a public meeting, and then Neil would fill out an application or Heather, and for the grant. We are out of funds this year, but of course, our new state this year begins July 1, and then new months will come up. So if that's something you're interested in, I would definitely do it and be sitting in the queue, waiting.
But you would need that in place before July?
Before July, you still have time for it to, to, to get the resolution in a public meeting, just to say, and then, and I'd work with Neil and Heather on the next phases of getting it, getting approved. I provide a sample RFP, I provide a sample list of consultants who do this work, and I help you throughout the whole process. It's a great opportunity, it really is, there's still, you know, there are up to 2,000, 200,000. I have people within five years that have taken advantage of close to $1 million, and...
Wow.
Maybe, and so you figure if you come in for five phases, that's 200,000 for a phase at a 10% match, so it's, but it has to be in recommendation, that's why I'll work really closely and make sure that you're getting a lot of what you want, and that we'll see if you want to achieve.
So what would be the next step if we want to do this? Pass a resolution?
Pass a resolution, and then just hit the apply, and then it will sit in my queue until July 1, and then we'll see really where we award the grants at. So I look forward to working with you guys, I came and spoke about four years ago about the opportunity. I hope they can take advantage of it and move forward with it.
Let's go right after we started shooting game? Yeah. Any questions?
Where's time go?
Any questions for Terry?
If you have, if you guys are ever in need of any questions... If you have, if you guys are ever in need of any questions or anything, please feel free to give me a call. Neil has my phone number, and my phone number's on your handout that I gave. I am, I'm available to answer questions, not just about grants, but about everything. If I don't know the answer, I'll get back to you. I will set that I'm a state employee, and I'm going to work with you. And I'm also going to call you back. I sat in that seat for 15 years, and I know what it's like to wait for a call for a few weeks, you know? So, I'm headquarter in Clerkville County, so I'm out of Harrisburg. It was nice to meet all you.
Nice to meet you, and thank you for coming, and we will be getting back to you.
Thank you.
So, our next step to this would be you write something up or present something to us?
Yep, resolution.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
At this time, our next thing is, if you want to explain that, resolution number two, setting the fee for outdoor seating permit, a new ordinance that we passed last year.
Yes, this is a resolution of the city council of the city of Titusville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, to amend Title 11, Chapter 191, Fee Central, of codified ordinances of the city of Titusville to set the fees for various applications, licenses, documents, and services provided by the city of Titusville. So, essentially, what this is, it would be a fee for anybody that wants to have outside, outdoor seating permit. As council reports, we changed it to allow it last year. One thing we left out was fee. So, I recommended a fee of $25. We actually have one, one business right now that is, has already filled the application out. We're kind of on hold until we figure out if we get this passed.
The fee isn't for an event, the fee is for the rest of the calendar year?
For a year, correct.
For a year from the day they do it, or the calendar year?
Calendar year.
Okay. Does everybody think that's a reasonable fee? So, they'd like to make a motion to pass this resolution?
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution for setting the fee for the outdoor seating permit.
Okay.
I second that.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Koval?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Corkman?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. At this time, we're going to open it up for public input. I've had the opportunity to meet a few people that are running for different public offices in the county and locally, and each one of them, I've told that they have the opportunity to come and during our public input, they can stand up. This isn't a campaign event. They can stand up, introduce themselves, and tell us what they're running for. So, I believe we have somebody here from the area that would like to.
I just come up here.
Yes, please.
Okay. Hi, my name's Stacy Holzer. I'm currently running for Crawford County Auditor. I'm a tax collector now for Troy Township and Townville. I've been a tax collector for Troy for 14 years and for Townville for six. People ask me, "Why do I want to run for this?" I've had somebody actually tell me, "I'd rather stick a needle in my eye than run for a county auditor." So, I'm just like, this is something that I always wanted to do. I think the job would be really interesting. I think I would really enjoy the job. I feel like I'm qualified to do the job, being the tax collector. The auditors audit the tax collectors. So, within those 14 years, I've gone through a lot of audits. I know what they're looking for. I've passed the audits, they've given me exemplary remarks with them, and I've done real well with them. I've also been a bookkeeper for 35 years for different businesses, currently with my husband's business, Holzer Comics. I live in Troy Township. I believe that the taxpayers of Crawford County deserve somebody that's going to be diligent to look after how the funds were, how the funds were spent and accurately reported. And if I'm elected, I will do that to my very best ability.
So, that's what, in a nutshell, that's what our county auditors audit all the books of the county?
Yes, they audit every check that goes through the county. They're looking at that. They audit the payroll checks that are written. They're looking at that. They are auditing the credit card statements of the county employees to make sure that there's nothing, there's no misuse or anything going on there. They are auditing like different bed and breakfasts a couple of years, things like that. And they're just making sure that there's no, the auditor's job is to protect the county and the taxpayers from any accidental or intentional misuse. And, and that's really, that's what I want to do, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate you voting for me, my 16th. Also, I'm a Republican, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else like to make public comment tonight? Nothing?
No, I think it's a long day. Sorry.
Ian Fickley, resident and co-owner, Business Center. You know, I'd just like to try to clarify something. You were talking about working with emergency care, possibility of sending 200,000 towards a voluntary ambulance, not voluntary, but ambulance associated with the fire department. Is that just again, another assumption that you're going to have that money and you're spending it on pickleball courts?
No, that money's American Rescue money, money that we were allotted. Two years, we were allotted $500,000. So, council, council last year, at the end of the year, allocated 200,000, a little over 200,000, that to start up an ambulance at our fire department.
Right. But what I'm saying is, from what I heard you say, is you really don't have anything in writing about how emergency care is going to let EMTs, volunteer EMTs, man, step their unused vehicle. My main question is, I wasn't at that meeting, and I apologize, but as I remember, a couple months back, as I recall, the other, or somebody involved with emergency care came to the meeting with his handout. Now, you're going to tell me they're going to be a benefactor when you return down?
Something.
I mean, as I understand, they asked for a considerable amount of money from the city.
He actually did, he actually did.
And we're total, no. And now, you're going to tell me they're going to be a benefactor and give something away?
So, you're not giving anything away. We've come back to the table with emergency care and sat down and tried to work out an agreement with them. This wouldn't be, this is our paid department, who are our guys that are working every day to be operating that ambulance. This isn't just any volunteer EMTs. These are our paid city employees who be operating the emergency care ambulance. Only used on a part-time basis.
Well, I understand that. I'm just curious, is, because like, you're taking, you're going on the assumption that there's not going to be any payout, that we're not going to be financially responsible for anything from emergency care, and you're spending $25,000 on a pickleball court. Where do we stand with the lighting, the electrical, and the benches and the tables for the park? Where is that at?
The lighting is part of the grant, that's going to be done.
And the seating and the benches and the park?
The benches and things will be done through funding, through donations, throughout the process.
So, that 200,000, that 25,000 can't go into a park, it's going to go to a pickleball?
Oh, they could. Council likes to, that they want to allocate some of our money toward the park, they certainly could.
Could I interject just one thing? Just to clarify, I think what Neil was saying and what we, at that meeting we were at with emergency care, I mean, with, yeah, when emergency care was here, one of the things that this benefits, not just our community, but the other communities, when you heard volunteer EMTs, a lot of times, let's use Townville, for example, if emergency care can't get here, then Townville would be one of the people that gets tripped. When they come here to help us, they're considered out of service if somebody in their community needs something. So, when you say, when you hear volunteer EMT, it would be other departments. Our guys are already there, and right now, if we get tripped right now while we're in this meeting, our, two of our firemen go to the scene with our fire truck.
Yeah.
And, and all that. So, that's what we're trying to, and yeah, we've actually, I had an opportunity to sit down once with Neil with emergency care, and we're actually, through communication, we're actually able to get some things going, and this is well beyond just hearsay, that we're just in the final steps of coming up with an agreement.
Okay. Just to step back, that 25,000, you took out building new pickleball courts down in Crawford County, all new, asphalt and fencing and everything else?
No, we would use the existing tennis court standards, and the fencing would be reused. It wouldn't be a complete, you know, redo of the asphalt, it would be some cracks going and things like that.
Okay, but that's, I'm familiar with pickleball.
Yes.
Growing very rapidly, and what I've seen most communities do is double use their existing tennis court, come in different color paint, and you could use it for either tennis court, rather than have a dedicated, you know, pickleball and dedicated tennis court. That's what I was trying to figure. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Good questions.
Good call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Pat Fickley, city president. I want to know where we stand on those waste receptacles in the city. It's getting, it's starting to get warmer. I have two dead flies in my store. I cannot have flies in a can store. They have to go. So, somebody's got to figure something out.
For what?
The waste receptacles. Those giant ugly bins.
Okay. We, we can get an update from Tri-County.
If I can add, I mean, we, I think we talked about this a few months back, and we had three options that folks could, in the downtown business, had options, either keep what they have, or they could have the event department, the wrong contact, the redevelopment authority, talk to Kristin Kerr. She has an agreement, I believe, with another business, local business restaurant in town that have their garbage taken somewhere else, or they can do their own thing.
Yeah, with a different company.
With a different garbage company. So, potentially smaller cans. So, there's three options.
From what I understand, my store's open three days a week. Each day, I have a bag, this bin, that I take out there. It's, it's a wastebasket, and that's all it is. I am of the understanding, I simply cannot take it home and throw it in my waste receptacle. Is that correct?
Nobody, nobody says, I don't know that there's an ordinance that says that. It doesn't mean you're not going to get a bill, but is there an ordinance that says they?
That they can take their garbage somewhere else. Certainly, it kind of falls under, if you want to do your own garbage service, you have that option if it's a business in town.
Okay, because I, I'm going to have to come over to the city hall then and tell them to take those waste receptacles from the front of my building because they simply can't keep them. They have to go.
I think you can contact Tri-County, right? They'll do that.
Right, yep, directly, or stop over.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, you're welcome. So, what public comments for? It's great. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to closing comments. We'll start with our junior councilperson tonight. We'll give you 10 minutes.
Congratulations to, 10 minutes. Congratulations to Detective Russell and Captain Glenn J. Correlli on reaching retirement. It's been discussed today, the public service is kind of slim here. So, we definitely appreciate the service, so, thank you. I mean, they're not here, but if they watch this, thank you. You can tell them.
Okay. Start with Councilman Jay.
Echo the same thing he said, thank the two retired, I guess Officer Russell was still here. Thanks for, you know, all your, all the work for the, all the years. And again, I'm new, I'm still trying to decipher a lot of stuff that's going on here, and yeah, it's all new, and so I'm trying to, I guess, listen in and not have a whole lot of comments yet till I kind of figure out where everything stands and all that kind of stuff, so, yeah. Going to take me a while, probably.
Thank you. Ken?
I'm just saying, for the, you know, all the events going on in the city, I know, I think on May 20, there's a 3K and 5K run, I think, in town. The gravel run on the 27th, which is going to bring up to 400 or 500 people, I believe, participants. Then they have the, I don't know the correct, probably reworded, the Hawaiian law on June 3rd. This year, then we got baseball tournament June 3rd, and they have the trail then June 3rd. So, next month's going to be pretty, pretty busy in town with.
Fly fishing tournament, Mother's Day weekend, Rotary puts on.
A fly fishing tournament. So, something going on every, every weekend, bringing a lot of people into town, and hopefully the residents and, you know, welcome everybody with open arms to support the city. And congratulations on the retirement to Glenn and Tim. You guys put in a lot of service. Glad I never had to deal with you. So, but besides that, you know, just, I'm excited where the next month and a half is, you know, for the town, a lot of, a lot of events coming in.
Bethany?
I don't really have much else to reiterate what everybody else just said here. So, hopefully, those that are hosting events are putting things on the community calendar so that people are aware, you know, as events start filling up the calendar. Sometimes we forget what's going on, what's out there. So, hopefully, they're going on there, and people are checking that out. And then, as, as the weather gets nice and the school is out in another five weeks or so, just remember and to keep track of that.
Oops, sorry. Was opening up another date, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, but that's all I really got tonight, too, just.
Because I'm going to want May 20, too, is the council, there are says different artists in town at different locations playing. That's what I was trying to look up, I hit the wrong button. Sorry.
That's okay. Thinking of the upcoming day, it's starting at Shady Park on Saturday, helps get ready for the spring, but also, right around the corner is the joint thing that we do every year with the school district, to put up the placards for the, or the yard signs for the, all the graduates around Shady Park, so that's exciting. Like, I'd like to reiterate what everybody else said, that we have a lot of upcoming events, a lot of things going on. And I had, was, had the opportunity to be there whenever this application was brought in for the outdoor dining. This is something kind of exciting that we passed an ordinance with last year that we think as more people do this, as somebody was just remarking this morning, it's fun to go through towns and see people eating outside and having that outdoor dining. And now with our new park opening up shortly, we should have a name shortly for that, too. Congratulations to Captain J. Correlli and Detective Russell for your almost 50 years of service between the two of them. That's really something to say, that was here, most of it was here in Titusville, not all of it for Glenn. And also, thank you to my fellow council folks for showing up. Neil, thanks for what you do. Heather, thanks for what you do, and our new safety commissioner for what you're doing. Tim, taking on a new role. We have a lot of stuff going on in town, and I would like to thank the people that are not afraid to stand up and speak about, during our public comment section, because we need lots of ideas. So, hope everybody has a great couple weeks here. I think we have Mother's Day will be coming up before our next meeting, right? It's on the?
It's a couple weeks, yeah.
But it's, it's on the 14th? No? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so, hope all the others in the community have a wonderful Mother's Day, and we'll see everybody here in a couple weeks. With that, would somebody like to make a motion to, is your?
I'd make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. If there's no discussion, or call the roll.
Mr. Corkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Koval?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.